Hello and welcome to another edition of our Get Growing Work Session from Get Oiling. I'm founder Greg Kilwin here and we're joined today by our awesome team members Julie and Colin.
Hey, everyone.
What are you doing?
We've been playing with Zoom backgrounds right before we got started with this. It's kind of fun. Yeah, so today I've got a hidden gems presentation that I'll dive into, but before we get to that in the chat, we'd love to know where you're from. So go ahead and drop where you're from in the chat. We'll look at that here in a little bit as it comes in. We've got some good stuff today, some lesser known features that are, I think relatively powerful. That's often overlooked or you know, kind of buried a little bit and I wanted to bring some attention to those. And got a little slide deck today and, and so lots of demos. So I'm going to share my screen. Okay, we've got people see some chats coming in here. We got Kansas City, Sioux Falls, Phoenix. So yeah, there's thanks for joining today. Going to share my screen here. And get this started. All right. Okay, so here's our here's our hidden gems slide. So with this, we're gonna, so the agenda today, we've got simply the hidden gems presentation, which I go through a wide variety of the system and then we'll follow it up with live help and Q and A. If you have any questions along the way, just pop them in the Q and A, hit the little Q and A button in the Zoom toolbar and drop your question in there. We'll be happy to get to it when we can. Doesn't matter if it's relevant to today's topic or if you've got some other question, we'll be able to help you out or follow up after the call and help out if we can't get you here live. So if you, if you're watching this as a recording on our YouTube channel, you can get on the list by going to get only dot com slash weekly work session. That'll sign you up for email notifications of the topics and also the replays every week. Once we're done, the replays get mailed out to you. So you don't, you know, in case you miss it, which can happen because we've got, you know, people from all over the world who are on these calls and oftentimes the time zone doesn't work out. So we always have the replays there and available for you on our YouTube channel. And if you want to work together live on one of these calls, there's nobody scheduled today, which is fine, but if you want to, you can book some time by going to get online dot com slash website review. That will get you, you know, you'll get a calendar, you get to choose one of the Thursday calls and you'll get to work most likely with Coach Ashley, but depending on the question, it could be somebody else too. And if you need to have a hand with anything, we have our concierge team available for hire, get on it dot com slash concierge. And we do also actually don't have a slide for this, but I'll mention it too. Yeah, kind of on the same vein, we do have live help available to live help calls. It's just get on it, get oiling dot com slash live help. And that is a free call, kind of bring your questions. It's kind of like this, this call, but without any training, we just answer your questions there. So so back to the, the topic here. What is, I'd love to know what your favorite Get Oiling feature or features are. So you know, go ahead and put it in chat and we'd love to know why too. Like what is it? What does it do for you or what does it save or what is it gain or you know, what is, what do you like the most? And kind of what do you use the most relevant to today's topic? If something comes up, might cover it too. If we don't, if we have a little time at the end. Cause I'm sure I've gone through the system and looked for some things that I think are neat, but there's probably other things out there too, that everyone uses on a daily basis that would be beneficial to share with everybody. So with this, I'm going to start off with the first bit here about how you can get around the system faster. So we have this organized that just to basically gone, you know, looking through the menu and, and going down, there's some features that are in there. I'm going to demo some things that maybe aren't obvious or you don't, you know, that aren't used a whole lot, but are still pretty powerful. So I'm going to start with the top search bar, which you can search for everything and save your favorites. Popping over to the dashboard, I'll just appear quick, but what I'm talking about here is the search box on the top. Now, this is, it's kind of easy to overlook because it's really tiny and you know, on mobile, it may be not visible if you're on your, on the app or if you're using the mobile web. This type defined box really lets you search everything in your system. I mean, it literally searches features like if you search for customized my site or pages or whatever, as well as anything that you have created, like the items within those. For example, like, you know, page names or campaign names or vault names. So all you have to do is click in there and type. So I think I, you know, if you search for, I don't know, the word work, you'll see that it matches a whole bunch of different things here and they're organized by category essentially. So the features show up first. And the, by feature, it means those items that are in the menu. So they, you know, those features will show up first and then it starts down with all the other items that match that are in your account. So if you have an event, you know, this shows an event that happens to match the word work. There's a landing page that has the word work in it, you know, campaigns, custom pages, resource bundles. And then this recent matches section always shows up down here. So it's a great way to find something quickly from wherever you're at, because this box pretty much appears everywhere in the system. There's a couple of little exceptions, but for the most part, this box is always here. And simply to use it, you just click on it. And one little tip is if you're working on something, let's say you've got a page open in the page editor and you're like, okay, what was that? I want to go edit that one campaign. You can type the campaign name in or whatever it is you're looking for and just click this little new tab button over here. And whoops, whoops. Okay. So you click on this new tab icon or button, and then it will pop it open in a new tab and then you can continue your, your work, your work there without having to lose your place where you originally were. Likewise, there's a there's right next to it, you probably see this little pin. So what that does, it basically pins it to the menu here to this pull down. So you can create your own custom menu essentially. Like if I were frequently editing this campaign for some reason, I could click pin, click it. And then there's a pinned item section. So like, you know, normally if there's nothing in here, what it'll do is show pinned items, all of your pinned items there. And then any recent matches below that. So you can have, you can pin as many as you want to here. You can pin features, you know, for example, if you wanted campaigns, you type campaigns in there. And here's the feature. So I'm going to go ahead and pin that. You're going to see it's going to show up here. There's your campaign. If you always, if you don't want to have your context menu open, you can just keep that closed and then just here's your pinned items. So it's a great way to jump around, basically create your own custom menu, which includes both features and your data. If you want to get rid of it, just click the pin again, it'll pull it off of the pinned item. And then likewise, or very similarly down here, any recent matches that you click on are also logged here. You can clear that if you want to by clearing it and you can also have the same features of clicking new tab or pinning those as well. So the recent matches are nice when you're working on something frequently, but you don't necessarily want to pin it. Odds are that it'll be in this recent matches list. If you've had a campaign or something that you're working on, that you've been searching for in this box. So that's something that is often overlooked, even though it is kind of at the top, I wanted to mention that one to help you get around the system faster and not necessarily have to remember where in the menu is this item, you know, in this in the large menu, because there's lots of, lots of things you can do with Get Oiling. So the next place I'm going to jump over to is organizing your contacts. There, there's been a couple of additions that I want to point out, and I think these may have been posted in the Facebook group or other places. But I'll start with this new website field. If I go to contacts, I'll just open up any contacts here. List of contacts there. This is a relatively recent addition. If somebody has a website that they have or is related to them or somehow associated with their contact, you, you'll be able to see that here, but you can click on edit contact. And then there is a new, newish website URL field down here. So I'm just going to type in a website address. And then now you can see it shows up on the profile. If you click it, it would take me there. So you can use that for, you know, keeping track of whatever reason that might be. I mean, there's all sorts of things, you know, it could be somebody's Facebook messenger link. It could be, there's a variety of different things you could do. That's a relatively new feature. It hasn't been getting a whole lot of use. I wanted to point that one out because it's, it's pretty useful in certain circumstances. Related to that, there is another newish feature here that I wanted to point out under. So when you're editing contact, let me start back over here. So you can kind of see it all from the beginning. When you're clicking on, if you, in your contacts, if you click on the name, it takes you to the detail, what I call the contact detail page, where it shows kind of a lot of, a lot of things about that contact, you know, their information, notes, activity, to do past actions, all sorts of stuff. But there's a feature under past actions where you can leave a note for yourself. Like if you have, I know a lot of the people here, a lot of Get Oiling people are also coaches and so they'll have session notes that they'll leave for themselves. And you can leave a note for yourself or any sort of note for, it doesn't have to be just, you know, like coaching notes or whatever, but it could be call notes or maybe just some note you want to drop to yourself. It's a little bit different than the background info up here because background info will show kind of everywhere and that's not really date based. You could type in a date. But this past actions is nice because it has a date and time attached to it. So if I go over here and add one, and let's just say I want to make a note, you know, I'd say actually, it could, it could be a note or a call or whatever. I'll just say call because I'll just pretend this is a call, had a call and discuss the following. One, two, three, a bunch of talking points. Okay, cool. So you can add that. And this feature has been around for a while, this ability to add your own note. And you can actually like search for it. There's this filtering feature here, which isn't used a ton either. If you click on the little filter icon, it shows that you can filter, like if I want to filter by call, now I'll only see those that are a call. And it shows that there's a filter applied. So there's been a new feature recently that's helpful for people that want this or that use this feature. There's an edit note button. Now, and that used to not be there and that only shows up for the notes that you add. So you can go in and modify them. If you're making notes along the way, you want to save them, you can, or if you forgot something or need to change something, you can do that. Many of those notes are now editable. And yeah, and you can also delete it as well. If you want to go ahead and delete that too. So that's pretty, that's relatively new. Let me pop over to the contact tags, which is, you know, a great way to keep, keep organized. So essentially these are like lists of people or, you know, different lists that people are on, you know, maybe there's something, you know, they like in this case, I'll just use this example contact here. Okay, there, maybe they registered on a skincare landing page and an AFT page and a few other things. So you can keep organized. And there's a few different ways of managing the tags. I'm sure you're familiar with this first one, which is just simply to edit this and pick or type a new tag. You can just type a new tag and it'll spring into existence, or you can pick from the list that you already have. But there's a newer feature that isn't quite used as often under contact settings called contact tags here. And this shows you all the tags that are in your account, at least for the contacts. And you can add a new tag here. I mean, if you want to create one in advance and start using it, it's a great way to do that. You can also then, you can rename these, like if you click on it, it'll allow you to rename it to something new. Or, you know, because oftentimes there's typos or you want to change a name, or maybe you want to go back and make all your tags look similar. So you can do that by renaming here and you can delete a tag too, just by clicking the X and that will remove the tag and like take it off of all the contacts that have it. There's other ways of doing that, but this is much more streamlined. So I wanted to point that one out as well. And also if you haven't seen this one, there's an organizational viewer and, and I know I'm kind of hopping around from different topics to different topics here, but these are kind of like the highlights of everything. So please keep that in mind here. But in the contact manager, there's a few different ways you can view your contacts. You can view them in a card view here, which is the default. Or it shows a lot of information about them. You can view them in a more compact list like this, which has tags and then some basic stuff. But what I want to point out here is the organizational viewer. Now this account doesn't have a whole lot in there. It's just so this only shows, so this view is great for a number of reasons. First of all, it only shows your young living team. Because assuming you imported your contacts from the Young Living Virtual Office, they'll come in here and they'll have different levels here. You can see this one's collapsible. If you have multiple levels of depth, there would be more of these little collapsible icons and you can work your way through there and get, you know, kind of see what's on the team. So it's a great way to visualize that. It excludes anyone else who's not on your team because they don't have a member number. And then the other neat thing that allows you to do is email a leg. So for example, if you only wanted, let's pretend each of these three people had a team of 20 people under them. So you only wanted email this Lillian's person or that Lillian's leg. Well, you can click that, you know, check the box and then say actions, I'll just say mail. And of course, write your message, but there's this checkbox down here. This is also mail the down line of each selected contact. And when you hit send, what that'll do is it starts at the top of whoever you checked in. It doesn't have to be at the top. This could be three levels deep. You can check that box and it will go and mail like everybody down there. So it's a great way to selectively contact people on your team. Especially if there's somebody, you know, if you have a larger team and there's somebody who's taking really good care of their leg, you don't have to pepper them with extra emails, as is sometimes the case, which is largely where this feature originated in the first place. Next up, we've got, let me go over to the to dos. There's a few items here that are related. This is still in the contact management area, but organize those according to like organizing your contacts in the previous slide. And now we're talking about sort of managing yourself and making sure you follow up when you want to and don't drop any balls, that kind of thing. So there's a couple of different ways you can manage it. So you may have heard us talk about creating a contact for yourself. If you're importing your contacts from the Young Living Virtual Office, I believe it comes with a contact for yourself. So you, you might actually have one already there for you. If not, you can always add it. It's pretty simple. You go to my contacts, click add, message back over here. But yeah, go to my contacts and click add, and then you can create a contact for yourself if one doesn't exist. It probably does if you've imported from Young Living. But the advantage of that, that gives you is then you have, like if I go into one of these contacts over here, it gives you all of this stuff that you can do for self-management. You can, I don't know, I don't know, I'm not quite sure what we use tags for, but you could leave yourself a note over here. You could have some past actions of things that you've done, but more importantly, I think the biggest feature is, or the biggest capability here is setting to do's for yourself that maybe not necessarily contact specific, like it's maybe not for a certain person, but let's say you've got some tasks you need to do for that day. You can put those in there with or without due dates. I'm sure you probably, if you played around with the contact manager at all, you've probably seen that you can add to do items, my new to do. And then you add it and it'll show up in the list here. Probably on the very end of it, because this is an old contact. So I don't want to page through all of them, but it shows, it shows up on the list. And then when you're done with them, you can check the box and it'll show up under past actions for you as marking that as done. So you can do that to self-manage. And then, you know, for, for the to do's, these of course can be applied to any context. So it's a great way to not drop the ball on anything. And so how you are become aware of these to do items, there's two different ways. One, I don't have a demo of it, but there is a daily activity email that is sent out every day. If you have something to do or there's various triggers for that. But once you do have a to do item on there, it'll show up on your email every day, as well as it does show up in your dashboard. If you go to your dashboards, there is a to do section down here. You can see the one that I just put here is available and you can, if you want, we can just mark it as done, check the box. It's done. You can also, if you want to preview what you, you know, what you have coming up ahead, you can do that. Account doesn't happen to have anything on these upcoming dates, but I wanted to to show you that because you can kind of, you can go back in time and see what you did, or you can go forward and see what you need to do, just simply by clicking around here on the dashboard. Which is a nice, a nice addition. Now related to following up, you know, to do's are great because you can set an item or set a reminder for a specific date. Like I want to I'm over here and I want to make sure that I'm going to follow up with here and you know, about a month. Okay. So boom, I can add a to, to do item for that. But that's just one reminder. You can add follow-up plans, which I'll touch here in a minute, but that's, that's also something you can do, which is a series of prepackaged to do items. But there's also this contact rating feature, which isn't used a whole lot, but you can rate the contact between zero and five. And as you can see with these little mouse hover things, the tool tips, it shows there's different reminders, like zero is never, excuse me, get reminded, get reminded once a year, every few months, monthly, weekly, and every few days. So if you have a contact that you really want to stay in touch with, but you don't necessarily want to set to do's on them, you just want to reach out every once in a while, you can do that. Set a rating, click it, pick a number and it'll show up on your dashboard as well as in your daily activity email. So if I go back over to the dashboard and scroll down, there's a section that says contacts you may wish to reach out to. These are all people that have been raided and they need a touch point and you can, you can skip it, schedule a follow-up or record some other action or send an email, depending on what contact information they have on hand. You can also, let me touch on follow-up plans and to do's with contacts and events. So talking about to do items, they're just an individual reminder on a given date for a specific contact. Now with follow-up plans, that takes it and creates somewhat of, allows you to automate it a little bit. So for example, if you have, if you've performed the same series of steps every time, under certain circumstances, let's, let's say you get a new person on your team, you can create and you do these five steps. Maybe you call them a couple of days after you hear about that, or maybe you send them some like postal mail or maybe there's a gift that you give them, you know, there's, there's all sorts of different things that you could potentially do and drip that out over time. A follow-up plan is really just a series of to do items that are linked. Or not linked, but they can be applied to a contact. So let me show you. Let's just pick this one birthday follow-up here. Okay. So this one, a couple of birthday reminder emails. So what this will do is it creates on, you can apply a follow-up plan to a contact. And then based on this day number, which is bait relative to the current day that we're on, it will add a to do item that has this on it, whatever you put here. So if I go, I'll show you what this does and you can add more, you can add another item and you can delete them as well. But if I go back to campaigns, contacts, and let me go over here, because I don't think this one has maybe there's another one that has fewer to do items here. Okay. This one doesn't have any to do items. So I'll go ahead and add this one. And this was the birthday follow-up, I believe. So if I click that and add the follow-up plan, now you're going to see, okay, I've got one to do item for today and one 365 days from now, next year, to follow up with another birthday email. So you can set those up and get those automated. Now those can be applied. Of course, you can do those on your own contact. You can do those on your contact. And you can also do those on events. That's kind of popping over to another topic, but I wanted to mention that here as well. Because events, which are a whole nother, you know, like if you want to hold a, an online or an in-person event, that's where this comes in. This is, you know, we have other trainings on what events are. But I also wanted to point out that you can put to do items on events. Like if you have a, this is really useful in some cases, depending on what you need to do to set up for an event, like who've got five tasks, let's say, let's pretend we're, we're doing a physical in-person event somewhere. You can set up some to do items like, okay, maybe maybe a few months before you need to make your last payment on the venue and you know, two days before you have to go in and finalize the you know, if you're bringing in catering or in the day, you know, the day before, maybe you gotta, there's a few, so you can add those. And you can even put them in the past. So like, let's say finalize or maybe not in the past, but finalize venue. Okay. So let's just say that is, I need to do that and that will show up here. And you can make last payment. Let's say that's due tomorrow. Add, those will all show up here. So you can have these to do items there. And then on your dashboard, those will show up down here. Events with to do's. And this also shows up in your daily activity email. So with two, just stepping back a little bit, the, the to do's, you can apply them to contacts, your own contact and as well as events, so that you can be reminded, basically this is a great way to get reminded to follow up and not miss anything. So yeah, so if I click back over to events, I'll, I'll see those. And yeah, you can, you can set to do's, which is kind of a neat feature and the follow-up plans do, that was the other thing, the follow-up plans do work with this. So you can, you know, you can have, I'm not sure what's in this. I'll just click it and see what happens. There we go. Okay. So went back through and added a whole bunch of things here. Okay. Purchase table, purchase supply. So yeah, you can have those. If you're holding a lot of events, like some people will hold weekly events, you could have these in a follow-up plan that would then apply every time you run of the, run one of these events, which just remind you of everything. And so it can be a great way to save some mental space, mental capacity for the actual event itself, instead of thinking about all the different things you have to do and, and making sure you don't miss anything there. Cool. Okay. So that's the managing yourself thing. I want to show a few more here. There's a few more different features before we hop into Q and A. Let's see if there's a okay, I'm seeing some, okay, these look like Q and As I can answer towards the end. So under moving over to more communication and branding of the website, there's a few different features here that I'd like to highlight too, that are pretty powerful, but again, overlooked a little bit. Two-way texting. So if you have two-way texting turned on, if you don't, you can click chat and it'll give you more information. There is on most plans, there is an extra fee for it because you get your own phone number and you can send and receive texts through that number. But what I'll show you here, if you have two-way texting, I'll go up under the account menu, click account settings and then go to two-way texting. And down here, there's a whole lot of settings about, that you can change about the two-way texting. I'll, I'll briefly touch on these, but the one I really want to talk about is down here. You can choose how you get notified when somebody sends you a text message on your number. If you have the app installed, which you can, if you don't know how to get the app, you can just search for app, click help and then click on this here and it'll give you links, give you links to download it. If you're getting, if you have the app installed, you probably don't need email and text notification. So those can be turned off because then you'll get an app notification. You can also be notified specifically by text when somebody opts out. And you can choose whether or not incoming calls are forwarded to your number. So if somebody hits call, it'll pass it through to your mobile number. If I go over to my contact info over here, it'll, it'll use this mobile phone number as the pass through essentially. So you know, whatever number that you want to have a dot or forward to, it can do that. And then you can also get text delivery notices, but down here, I want to point this out specifically. So with the caller ID, of course, you're probably familiar with this. The phone numbers can only have, or sorry, the phones only display one phone number. Originally, when this two-way texting first came out, it would always show the incoming caller's phone number. But people who are getting the phone calls, you know, people with Get Oiling accounts, they were getting their phone calls, but they didn't know, was this a business number or was this something else? Cause it was just show their call, excuse me, their caller's phone number. And so we added the second setting down here. What this will do, if you, if you check this box to show the two-way texting phone number, your, your phone number will show you, or sorry, your caller ID on your mobile phone will show you your two-way texting phone number, which is, you know, displayed right here, whatever yours is, would be there. But the cool thing is, if you look at the little tooltip, it also will send you a text at the same time you're getting a call. So if somebody calls your two-way texting number, you'll get a text at the same time. It will have their phone number in it. So you can see what the phone number is, as well as it'll tell you whether or not the contact exists in their contact man, in your contact manager. And it will also give you, if it does exist, it will give you their name as well as a link to their contact. So you can quickly tap on the text and go to the link and then see who it is. And then decide whether or not you want to answer, for example. So you get a lot of information if you choose this option. So I do highly recommend this if that's something that you're interested in. It just gives you a little more visibility. You know, it's your business number essentially. And then you also know who is still calling because it sends you a text at the same time. And of course, if you you have to have a mobile phone number, you know, one that accepts texts put into your mobile phone field here. Otherwise you can't accept incoming calls. So so yeah, that's a fun little feature there. Let me, I'll show you another one here. This is about under campaigns. So you can link different campaigns together with automations. This is something that I think Coach Ashley has covered a few times, but we haven't had like a specific training on it necessarily. So with, in this case, I believe this works on premium and higher plans. I, I don't think the basic plan allows you to do this. What you can do on any of these, any campaigns that you have in order to do this, you have to check this box. This is edit message times and automations. And it allows you to run an automation on a specific day. So the use case or when, how this is used is, let's say you have let's say you have two or three different lead magnets on your website, different places. And maybe you're sharing them on different social media sites. Maybe you've got one for Facebook and a different one for Pinterest and a different one for LinkedIn or wherever that you might be sharing these, these pages, these landing pages, and each one might be on a different topic. But the email itself only really sends them, you know, maybe their lead magnet and a couple of follow-up emails and after, after that. But you still want to have some follow-up with them. So what you would do in that case, so you'd have, let's see, you've got three lead magnets. You'd have a campaign on each one of those, which you know, is normal because you'd have to send them the lead magnet by email. But you can set up each of those campaigns to then move that person or start another campaign that is like, let's say you have a generic one that has 20 Move that person or start another campaign that is like, let's say you have a generic one that has twenty emails in it. That, you know, sends out emails over time. So um, I wish I had a diagram for this one. But what it, you know, what it'll do essentially is then you don't have to repeat those messages in each one of those campaigns. You can just send them to another campaign. I'll show you how to do that. Um, so let's say at the end of this campaign here, let's say, let's pretend this is a, a live event instead of like a lead magnet. It's a live event showing the workshop is tomorrow about to go live. And then following that, let's say you want to send them over to another campaign. What I'll do first is I'll add another message here. And I'll say some, I'll say something like, you know, thanks for attending. And maybe this is the other day after. And it was great to have you here. But did you? Take away from the call. Okay. So I'll go ahead and save that. And now we're gonna have a new message on the bottom here. And so after the event is over, it will allow you to um select an automation. Uh, well, I mean, you can, you can do that on any of them, but what I'm gonna do in this case is pick an automation and. Let me go over here and edit them. I'll add a new one um, so I can have this. And uh, let's just say that we want to have. One, what is this one here? Okay, no, anyway, so I'll just add a new one called um. Something like lead magnet to, or no, I'll just call this one add to. General follow up campaign. Okay. And so what this will do, you can add something to it and I will pick a campaign. Add a campaign if they haven't received it before. Uh, I'll just. I don't know, randomly grab one of these. Here, how to create better habits. Let's, I'll just pretend that's the one we want, like a generic one. I'll click add and then save this. And now if I go back over to campaign messages. The uh, add the general follow up campaign one should be down here. Add the general follow up campaign. And so what this will do now is when this campaign is over, it will automatically send them. To another campaign, start sending them the other campaign. I mean, so a great way to like link them together and chain them together. Uh, another way, another use for this, as I have noted here in my slides. You can have a date based campaign followed by an evergreen campaign essentially. Uh, so what this would do is let's say you have a specific. You, you have some program that you're kicking off and you have some, it starts on a very specific date. You could have your uh, like this campaign is set up to start sending on a specific date. But then this campaign could also then. Uh, add them to another campaign that restarts itself every week. Let's say there's a weekly call after your event. You can do that. So your next campaign could just be a weekly call. Or, or it has to send on day seven, for example, day six, something like that, that. Or day seven, I guess, for weekly. And then when it's done with the, it would just add itself. So like when I was editing this automation. Uh, there's another option here to add or restart the campaign too. And so that's what you could do there. For that case, if you wanted to have uh, you know, like an initial date kickoff and then weekly follow ups thereafter, you can set that up. Through the campaign um, or through the campaign editor here as well. So. Wanted to point that one out. That is a little more complex. If you have questions about that one, certainly we're happy to help out with that. That is something cool that you can do with the automations. Now, uh, on the branding side of things, I wanted to show you some custom email templates. This is something that's often overlooked, but can really add a nice personalized touch. Yeah, let me see. So I'm gonna go to first the member area here. Uh, under setup. There is a um, let's see here, the, I think that's under advanced. Yeah, so you can choose whether or not to use your own custom email template. And this one happens to have some, some stuff in here. But what this does um. By default, any email sent to the member area, which are primarily the um. Like discussion room posts and follow ups, they can be formatted according to an email template. So you can create an email template and then there's this little tag inserter. So like this is where the message body would go, the normal message body that's created by the system, for example, like. So and so commented on your post or there's a new post here available for you in your discussion room. That kind of messaging, there's, there's a few other messages like that. But you could then, for example, combine this with. A Canva document. I, I wonder if there's a, it's not a file, I don't know what I do. Uh, I want an image actually. You could use Canva to um. You know, let's say there's something here. And anyone, this is your email header. This is maybe not the best example, but you could use Canva to create some sort of graphic. And then have your message body, you know, this could be your branding. Here could be the message body and then you can have your signature on the end of it. Um, so that will just, you know, an extra level of personalization for stores. Or sorry, this is the member area, but you can do the same for stores as well. It's very similar, go into store settings instead of member area. And it's also under advanced, I believe. Where you can choose your own custom email template. And again, you always want to insert that message body somewhere. But you'd, you know, you'd want to insert some sort of image that goes with it. And then, I mean, you don't have to insert an image, but it's nice, you know, for branding, you can include a banner there that you make in Canva or whatever other source. And then include, you know. Your. Some sort of uh sign off or footer or whatever that you want to. So just kind of an extra level of touch and branding that you can add to both. The store and the member area. There's another feature that we see, this question comes up a lot, actually, like, how do I see my sent message history? So like, once you've sent all this stuff, like, okay, you know, you've got texts and campaigns and emails, like, what, how do you see what's been sent? And how many like credits did this use? It's uh, if you go to the contacts menu and click on messages. Then you, there's a few different button or links across the top. I want them, the one that is uh probably. The best analogy I know of this for this is it's like a contact or it's like your sent inbox of your normal email. They click on history. This account doesn't have a whole lot in here, but what this does is it shows individual emails that were sent. So this includes not only like the scheduled bulk emails, includes texts. It includes campaigns. It's like everything that's been sent out, really, it'll show up here. So if you did have, for example, you've sent a bulk email to a hundred people, you'd have a hundred rows in this page. And you, there's a paginator, so you could click through it and see, but then you can see individually, okay, who opened that, how many clicks did they have? And then if you're counting, if you're wa- watching your marketing credits, you can see how many credits that it ultimately used. Email is always gonna be one, text messages can vary depending on. Um, a variety of factors, including, you know, country and, and everything that uh is delivered to. So the his sent history is a great way to um, to see that. If you want to see the details of the messages, click on the subject line or the text message itself, it'll pop it up. And if for some reason, like it happens every once in a while, the person didn't get the email or the text. You can click on this resend email button on the bottom. And that will then allow you to resend it. You can edit it first. And then hit send and it'll resend it. It does send it to that same person that it was sent to originally. So that works for both emails and texts. Uh, that did get into my last point here, which is on this slide, which is the resenting messages. Uh, what you can do in, to one person or in bulk. And that can be done over here on uh scheduled, well, actually it's technically the sent ones only, but the scheduled and sent often has that. But so once, if you have sent an email, which you can do, I won't cover that here, but you know, you can send it from the dashboard. Click on send email, or you can do it through the contact manager under actions and then send email. It works for text too. But when you resend, you can resend it and actually select a different audience. So once it's been delivered, you can click on it. It'll pop up a box. It'll show you the delivery statistics. This one didn't. This is just a demo account, so there's not, you know, not some, sometimes there's crazy stuff in here, but. Um, so here, there's a resend message button at the top. And what else will do is it takes that message. And it allows you to choose, okay, who am I gonna send it to again? So let's just say I want, I'll just send it to everybody, so I'm gonna leave it blank. If you're curious who it's gonna send to, click on the see matching contacts. It'll show you, okay, this case is a hundred and eleven people. Uh, let's try this, okay. Put this tag on there. Okay, that's no contact. So you can go through and see, you know, like how many people might be matching. Uh, each tag before you send it out, so you make sure that you've got the right audience before you pick it. But once you've got that done, you can continue your rescinding by click right and then it'll show you how many contacts. And then you can edit it if you want to before you send it, um, or you can send it, or you can also schedule your resend as well if you want to as. To, so. Uh, so yeah, that's a, that's a great way to, to be able to resend an existing message or a message that you have already sent. There, so. All right, so next up here. You can, uh, there's some content tips that I wanted to share with you too. The Zoom recordings, if you record them to the Zoom cloud, you can actually like push them right into your video library, just add them right there. Because uh, with the Zoom that's included with Get Oiling here under the Zoom menu. The recordings eventually disappear. Now we, over time, so if I click on my recordings here under Zoom. You'll get to see, so right now it's set to thirty days. Over time, we've been able to increase that, which is great, how the recording retention. But eventually it does disappear from the Zoom cloud. Uh, because I'm in Zoom right now, I can't share how to record, but there is a help article, um, which you could search for. For uh finding how to record at the Zoom cloud. But basically click the recording button and then say record to cloud. And then it will do its thing while you're recording. And then when you're done, it'll show up under this video meeting recordings here. So this one is just the, you know, this is one I did. Uh, so I had a, a demo one here, but basically all you have to do on the. You know, you can download some of these files that are, you know, they're not the videos, but the one that is the video like this, this one here, the active speaker view. You can just click, say, copy into my video library. And then what that will do is it'll show up under your content library under videos. Uh, it takes a few minutes to pull it over. It's basically a one click download. Great, then you can keep it long term in your video library without having to do a whole lot. Otherwise, you have to download it and then go over to your video library and then upload it again. So this just saves a step. Uh, if you want to download it, of course, you can to save a copy. I certainly recommend keeping copies of important. Files, because you never know when the internet might not work and, you know, that was good to have copies of important videos they have there. Now, if you're moving videos from uh another platform. They, what I wanted uh, make over to the videos page here under content library. Um, of course, you could just upload them if you have them. That's probably the easiest way. But you can also import them from another video provider down here. You just click the link. There's some instructions. We have a Vimeo example down here on where you get the link. You paste in the link, give it a name and hit import and it'll pull it over there without, again, without you having to download it and upload it. So that can be a nice little time saver. And another little neat trick, which is up to you whether or not you want to use this, but this could be useful inside of a, a class, for example. If you have um, or, or anywhere that you want to track video watch percentages. You can upload MP three or audio files to the video player. So like this one, for example, I click on that one. Um, I'm sure you can't hear that, it's just an audio file that um, I have uploaded there. It actually will convert it into a video with this little thumbnail of this audio. And it's in your video library. So you can, you know, that's one way of doing audio. There's another way of doing audio that I'll, I'll show you in a little bit. But this can be useful uh in certain cases when you want to have that, you know, maybe embedded with a bunch of other videos and you just have an audio file. Uh, that's a great way to do that. And next up with that is the audio player. This is another thing that. It comes up every once in a while. So you can put it in a video if you, if you don't mind it being in the big playbox um, like this, you know, with all the controls. But if you just want an audio player, this works anywhere. Oh, sorry, quick question about how did I get to the screen here? Yeah, this is under uh, content library and then videos. Wanted to answer that one here, quick in the Q and A. Okay. Anyway, we were, okay, this is the audio player. So this works anywhere. This could be on a page. You know, you could be under pages. I'm just gonna go to my story and photo because that's a simple place to, to jump uh right there and show you how the audio player works. So anywhere that you're uh, you see this little editor, you know, the bold italic and all these different icons. You can add the video or the uh, yeah, the audio player. It doesn't work in email. It only works um, on the website. But once you have an audio player here, or once you have a file, audio file, you can insert that. So what I'm gonna do is if you click on this more rich icon, you can upload a file. This is where you would drop an MP three file or some other audio file. Or you can uh, I'll just use from the library. And if you look here, the ones that have a little note icon next to them are audio files. And if you just click on them, it just inserts a link to the file, which isn't exactly, you know, oftentimes what a person wants to do. So if you click on instead the little note icon, it adds an audio player instead. And so then they have a little player that they can use in there. Uh, and this is how it shows up. And you can, you know, remove it if you want to. So that is a, a cool way to embed an audio file, which is, you know. Lot of different use cases for that. The audio files can be, uh, you know, again, uploaded by upload file. Or you can go over to your content library and click on files. And then upload files here. So either ways, uh, a great way to get your audio on your page. Uh, or in your class, um, or inside the member area. Cool. People are loving the, the audio file. Thanks for the feedback. The audio player. Uh, related to this, there's the bulk deleting of images and files. And so that will, um, that can be done. So like, I'm in the file manager right now. This is fairly straightforward. It's a checkbox. You can check multiples or maybe you want to select all on the page or not. Once you do that, click delete, it'll just delete them all. Now, one question that comes up here. And this also, sorry, this also works for images too. Before I do that, you can select all and delete if you want to, uh, or, or at least one page at a time. Now, a question that often comes up is when I delete it, does it actually delete it from where it's been used? No, it just deletes it in your audio or, or your, sorry, your file or your image library. So if you're using this image somewhere and you delete it, you don't have to worry about that image being broken or the file not downloading. It's still there. It's just not in your library anymore. So uh, yeah, the, the bulk delete for images is nice because sometimes if you copy and paste, you end up with like a dozen little images that. Are just, yeah, something that, you know, clutter up the image library, but it's uh, and you can delete them individually too if you want to as well. So. Uh, that's a handy little feature there. Whoops. So there's the, before I move on, there's the resource bundle feature, which I'll touch on lightly. We're getting kind of lowish on time here. So I'll um, maybe I'll touch on this one more lightly than I normally would have. But what a resource bundle is, is like anything that you can create in your, almost anything that you can create in your Get Oiling account. You can give to somebody else who has a, another, or has their own Get Oiling account. This is really great for business building. Uh, if you have, let's say, a website template or maybe a class or. A campaign or follow up plan or something that you would like to give to somebody, you can do that. You can create a resource bundle. Basically, you give it a name, give them a resource, uh, or one or more resources. You can include as many as you want to, but I'll just. Include a few things here kind of randomly to show you what can be done. Uh, let's say this is, you know, you've got a new builder and they need a landing page and a campaign and a, and a page. Okay, so you can do that. Give it a name. Click create. I'll just go back because I don't need another one. But then you'll, um, then what you would do is get a. Uh, you would get a link and so you can click this get link. And then if you open, this is what you would share with them. You get this link, you share it with them. It shows how to use it. All they have to do is check the box and click claim and then it'll copy it into their account and then they can do with it what they want to. So a great way to get people off to a jumpstart if they also have a Get Oiling account. It's um, such a time saver to be able to get a, you know, maybe a page and, and all these other um, all these other different things. So. The other item is you can see who's claimed it to, like if you have something that you can tell when they have. Um, claimed it, you can see there's a big list of people that have claimed that resource bundle. That is all, you know, click under usage. Um, so you can see all that information and know when somebody's actually done it. And uh, so yeah, that's, that's kind of, that's the overview of that. And I want to touch on some of these other things here too. There's a few different little miscellaneous items that I want to cover. Uh, two while we're at it. When you're in the editor and there's uh, some formatting that's not pasting. So there's like a few different ways of pasting content. Let me go back over here to the My Story and Photo because that's a nice little editor. But. So if you can see here, I don't know if this is easy to see. But like, there's some different colors and fonts going on here. Like this is a little bit bigger. This is a, a little bit smaller and it's lighter. Um, so what I would do in this case, uh, I'll select it all or click select all and I'll do a cut. But there's a few different ways of pasting. Number one, I could just paste, you know, command V, control V, puts it back exactly as you saw it. Uh, I can do its command, this is a keyboard shortcut that you can't see here, but I'm doing command, I'm on a Mac. It would be control on uh Windows, but either commander or control and then hold down shift and V. And then you get the paste plain text version of it, which you can see maybe entered some, added some extra lines here, but you can change the formatting, but the font is consistent. Uh, and then in the menu, if you right click, you can do a paste and match style, which does the same thing as the command shift V. And there's also, if that isn't working, we have a little feature under more text, this little clipboard icon. Click paste plain text and then you can paste that in and then hit this little icon and it will do that as well. So it's another way if you forget the keyboard shortcut or just want to go through this way, you can do that. Sometimes that can help out with the formatting issues. Uh, another related item is you can change a link to a button, which is kind of cool. So if I have my link, I'll just highlight that, click the link and I'll. So if I have my link, I'll just highlight that, click the link and I'll just put Get Oiling in here. And so now we've got a link and you want to make it look fancy or pretty, click on style. And you can pick a button and then it will turn into a button. So you can choose from a number of different buttons. Great way to go back and forth. You can also go back to a link if you, whoops, if you'd like, click default style, turns it back into a link. You can add a link to a Young Living product with your member number there as well. If you there's under this more mist icon, there is a little leaf icon here. If you click that and then paste the URL to any of the wild product website links, it'll add your member number on it. So let me show you that. I'll just go to youngliving.com. And click on one of these here and I'll just grab something at random. Grab a product. And this, okay, so once we've got a product, let me, I'll just copy this. I'll go back over here, click the leaf icon, paste in the product. And you can see it added a sponsor and a roller ID to it, so that if somebody clicks that link, then you get credit when they buy. So it's a nice little time saver. You don't have to worry about all the little coding stuff that has to happen. It just does it automatically. And then I mentioned changing button styles. So the final thing on the list today, I believe, I don't think, yeah. So the final thing on the list today is reordering vaults. This is something that is there, but it's not super obvious. But this little grab it icon here, this little gripper thing, you can drag these bolts and reorder them. This will change the order that they appear inside the member area for people. So cool. So that's, that is what I have in my slides. And then I move over to live help here. I see there's a number of questions in there. Do, 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 do. Okay, so we got a question here from not talking to Zella. How do you create a weekly? How do you create a weekly or repeated to-do item? So there, there isn't a way to do that indefinitely, but you can, when you're setting up a follow-up plan, it's relatively easy to add an item, you know, let me, I'll just pick one that's already there. He would just go out, space this out, day seven, fourteen, twenty-one, twenty-eight and so on. You could set it out, for example, for a year, you know, go to whatever many seven times, you know, fifty-two weeks of seven days apart. And then when you add that, it would add a whole year. And then the last one, you could, maybe the name of this one would be, you know, make sure you could also add to the, to the to-do item. Also, please reapply the follow-up plan, because this is the end of it. If you want to do it for another year, or however long you want it, you could go out a couple of years if you wanted to. So that would, that's the best thing that we have to have repeated to-do item at the moment. Allison, there's a question here. If we record another action and the people you may want to reach out to on the dashboard. Will that person go away from that box? Yes, it will. So what, what she's talking about here is on the dashboard, there's this context you may wish to reach out to section. This is, this comes from the contact rating here. So you can see this little rating icon. So I've got a couple of contacts that are rated pretty highly, so they show up here. If you click this remind, or what was that, record another, yeah, if you record another action here, that will make this go away until their reminder is due again. So even if you have a call or a note or whatever you want to do, that can be done. That will make it go away off the list. Let's see here. Okay, so I believe Alice is now talking. She has another question about the two-way texting. Let me go over here into the account settings. And go up under two-way texting. If I, I went there and have three boxes checked, who sent me the daily email? Oh, wait. I think this is actually a lead question. I think she's talking about contact settings. And then general settings, which is something I didn't get to, but you can have new lead notices email sent by email, text or mobile app. And yes, if you uncheck email and text, then you would only be notified through the app. So you can, and the text message, you just, you know, try it out, like check the box and get, you know, register on your own landing page and it'll show you what that looks like if you want to see what that, that looks like. Lisa has a question here. If we're to record a video to the vault, does it disappear as well? If we record to YouTube, we can upload as well. So if you record to the vault, it does not disappear. Anything that ends up in your video library stays there as long as you have your account. It will be in here. And then if you're using, I mean, so one other little tidbit that I'll mention here too. If you're using the app, again, you know, just search for app in the help center. If you're using the app. Most devices allow you to like a tap here. And it'll ask you if you want to record a video or select an existing video. So you can actually record a video right from your phone using the app. And then it pops into your library. You don't even have to have any fancy equipment. You just need your phone. And you'll be able to do that. But when, when you're adding it to a class, which I'll come in here and check out a class. When you're editing, I'm going to go click on the lesson title and get in here to the video. You can choose from the existing video, but if you have if you have a YouTube link, you can paste that here and that will show up inside your class as well. And that that does not disappear. The only thing that eventually disappears are those Zoom cloud recordings. Those have a thirty-day limit at the moment. So. Okay, so it looks like there's also a question over here from Lisa. Is there any way to clean up the blog categories? If I went in each of my posts and changed the category, can I delete the old from displaying on the website? It should automatically clean that up. So what she's talking about here is if I go under, I guess that's under blog post, under the website menu. When you're editing posts, there are categories available here and there'll be some that are here. So if you edit all of the blogs that have that specific category and delete that category, it should remove the category. But currently isn't the blog, is not a blog category manager. That is a nice wishlist idea though, something we could certainly consider. Similar to the contact tag manager. But right now you'd have to go through and, and delete all the blog posts, or not delete the posts, but delete the categories from the posts if you want a blog category to go away. And if you have any trouble with that, let us know. We can do, you know, sometimes we can do things in the backend. If there's some pesky category that won't go away. Most often the one, the problems I've seen with that tend to be with drafts. People will search their website, for example, their blog on their website. And they'll see that there's no post in this category, but then they'll go look back and there's a draft that actually has that category on there that's causing it to still stick around. So oh, well. Okay, one other question that just came in here. We're kind of getting to the top of the hour. Is there a place that displays the list of the frequent site visitors that are or aren't already in your contacts? And yes, there actually is. If you go to your dashboard, this little widget on the, or the little graph on the top. This is a bad example, because this is only one website. Apparently it's been only one visitor. Normally this is a pie chart that will have slices on there and it will show you percentage of the activity. Essentially that the person has done, and you can see maybe who's the, who's done the most. You can actually even toggle and view a list. It shows you how many actions that they've done in that case. You can toggle back and forth. But yeah, this is where you would see that. And yeah, that, that data would be available here on the top contacts. Can you see what pages the contact has visited? Um, let's see, if I go to my contacts here and and click on show activity. Yeah, it does not actually show you the content or the page that they visited. At the moment, that would be, it's a good wishlist item. You can go under my account activity and see overall activity by pages viewed. So you can see like the top, the most viewed pages in the last, whatever your plan allows, however many days. But you can't see which contact viewed what page. So that would be, that's a good wishlist item. Follow-up question, but that already shows people are already in contacts, not random traffic. It does show random traffic. It'll, I believe it, it'll say website visitor. When it doesn't know who they are, you know, so if he gets a brand new visitor to your website and they have never registered on your website. And you don't know who they are, then they will appear here as just the website visitor. And those, those people would all be lumped into one category. Called website visitor. So you'd be able to, to see that. So all right, a few more questions coming in here. Can we upload voice recordings from our phone and add it to our vault? You should be able to, because you can, you can take an audio file and put it as a video. You could. If you're, I'm not sure whether you're talking about a class or just a page, but either way, you should be able to do that. Like if you're editing a class and editing a lesson and you're on your phone, I'd use the app for this, because then that makes it a little bit easier, but you could upload. Click upload, come here, tap on this, and it should allow you to pick your audio file, or you can just record. I believe as well, although that would probably do a video, I would think, if you recorded right from here. So you could choose an audio file. Otherwise, if you don't want to use the video feature, you don't really have to. You can come over here and upload a file, that's just the audio file, and then insert it as an audio player like this. To be able to add to the vault. That could be in a lesson. It could be a page in the vault. Like if I go over to the vaults here. Pick one of these and then click on one of the pages. I can go ahead and add that, you know, let's say an audio player down here as well. So if I wanted to pop that in there, we'll see an audio player. So you can have a whole variety of those. Like if you have a page, it's like all my audio resources, you could do that. The question here from Paul, is there a way to use a Steve reply in the discussion area in a vault? They reply in a discussion area. Uh, no, but that's a that's a good wishlist item. Never, I don't think I've heard that one before, but, but yeah, that's, that could possibly be done. That could be something we could add to our wishlist. It's not possible now, but something we could probably look at on the wishlist. And I think, let's see here. Oh yeah, so the wishlist item over here from Lisa. Seeing the names and the number of times they visit the website showing up under their contact info. That would be pretty neat to be able to see that information. Cool. Maybe he's got a question. How do we get the app? So the easiest way, there's a couple of different ways, but the easy, I mean, you can go to your, you know, the Google Play Store or the Apple App Store. And the, the app name is actually called Attract Well. It's the name of our sister product essentially, because we named it that so that people didn't, it doesn't give away your oily secret, you know. If it's called Get Oiling, then people would be like, wait, you know, possibly, I don't want anything to do with this. But if you want a direct link to it and you don't want to search for attract well in the app, you can click on the help icon and just search app. Click here and then it will have the Apple and Android links that you can then use to download the app to your phone. Cool. Well, that was a great call today. Appreciate all the comments here. I'm gonna read through, you know, I think a few of you actually. No, I'm going to cover some of these messages about the the best features that you guys like here before we go. I just remember that here. So Karen says, I like and use the email feature to send posts to my group. Erica says, is a page creation and the ability to edit an existing page in moments from my phone and the chat feature? So you don't have to ration credits while with conversations. Cool. Okay, I appreciate those. So awesome. Well, with that, we'll wrap this up and thank you again and we'll see you next week.